Okay, good evening. We're gonna open our regular counseling at 6:53 PM for March 14th. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and created in such things.
Okay, roll call.
Elliot.
Kelly.
Here.
Here.
Curiousus.
Here.
Kuyu.
Here.
Martin. Morrow.
Here.
Snitzke.
Present.
I'm gonna make a motion to excuse Councilman Martin this evening. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin. Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
We now go to reading and disposal of the journal.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kuyu.
Having read the minutes of the regular meeting of February 28th, 2023, and November 15th, 2022, I find no errors or omission, and if there's no division of the question, I move to accept the minutes as submitted.
Curiousus, second roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
We have no submissions for the consent agenda, any resolutions of condemnation? None? Reports of committees planning zoning and economic development. Councilman Snitzke.
Yes, previous minutes from previous meetings have been submitted. The next planning, zoning, and economic development meeting is April 25th.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, it's next weekend, so two weeks.
March 28th.
March 28th.
Okay, we now go to Public Works with Councilman Kuyu.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works was held this evening, March 14th here. Next meeting will be April 11th, and minutes are on file with Clerk of Council.
Thank you. Community Services Council Pro Tem Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was this evening. The minutes are pending, and our next meeting is April 11th.
Thank you. Police and Safety Councilman Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last meeting was held this evening. Meeting minutes are filed with the clerk. The next meeting will be held on April 11th.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Councilman Morrow.
Thank you, Council President. Our last meeting was on February 28th. Meeting minutes are on file with the clerk, and the next meeting is on March 28th.
Thank you. Rules, ordinance, and ethics. Last meeting was February 28th. Minutes are on file with the clerk, and the next meeting is March 28th. Finance, Social Service, and Personnel. Last meeting was this evening. Minutes are pending. Next meeting is March 28th. Appointments and confirmations? None? Communication, petitions, and claims? There are none. Council open to the audience on legislation only. We now go to reading ordinances and resolutions. We now go to the third reading of ordinance number 7-2023.
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 7-2023 for its third and final reading.
Morrow, second. Roll call. Morrow, yes. Oh, sorry.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend the appropriations of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the year ending December 31st, 2023.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move that we pass ordinance number 7-2023.
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 7-2023 has passed. We now go to the second reading of ordinance number 12-2023.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with American Fireworks for the purpose of selling, furnishing, delivering, and presenting a fireworks display for the city of Seven Hills as Home Days 2023, and appropriating a sum not to exceed $14,000 for said service.
We now go to the second reading of ordinance number 13-2023.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Gary Pearlman, Dr. Awesome Inc., for the purpose of entertainment for the city of Seven Hills as Home Days 2023, and appropriating a sum not to exceed $500 for said service.
We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 16-2023. Councilman Kuyu.
I make a motion to suspend the rules of council and read ordinance number 16-2023 by title only for its first and final reading.
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance to appropriate a sum of $190,000 for outside legal counsel, various vendors, for the year 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Is there further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kuyu.
I move to approve the emergency clause in Section 3 of the ordinance.
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kuyu.
I move to pass ordinance 16-2023 as an emergency measure.
Morrow, second.
Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 16-2023 has passed. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 17-2023.
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Kelly.
I move to suspend the rules of council and read ordinance number 17-2023 by title only for its first and final reading.
Curiousus, second. Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Jackson Deacon and Associates of Westlake, Ohio, and appropriating a sum not to exceed $142,000 for the furnishing of comprehensive municipal liability and cyber insurance renewal effective April 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2024, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Kelly.
I move to approve the emergency clause found in Section 4 of ordinance 17-2023. The emergency clause is needed for timing. This contract begins April 1st of 2023.
Curiousus, second roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Council Pro Tem Kelly.
I move to pass ordinance number 17-2023 as an emergency measure.
Curiousus, second roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 17-2023 has passed. We now go to the first reading of ordinance number 18-2023.
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move to suspend the rules of council and read ordinance number 18-2023 by title only for its first and final reading.
Elliot, second. Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Martin. Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with homo construction for the Seven Hills Parks Phase 3 improvements, project number 21121, appropriating an amount not to exceed $451,480 for said services and declaring an emergency.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move to approve the emergency clause in the last section of ordinance number 18-23 simply because we're in the construction season and we wanna get going on it.
Elliot, second. Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Snitzke.
I move that we pass ordinance number 18-23 as an emergency measure.
Elliot, second. Roll call.
Elliot.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Curiousus.
Yes.
Kuyu.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Snitzke.
Yes.
Ordinance number 18-2023 has passed. Council now open to the audience for comments. Jack Thane.
Jack Thane, 6264 Crossview Road. Mr. President, I'd like to know, does our city keep a active list of sex offenders within our city?
I'd like to concur with the law director on this.
I know the county keeps a record of it. I'm not sure cities keep records of that.
Pardon? What about our city?
City's still part of the county. It's accessible to the sheriff's office. It's something you can put in a street address, you can put in a zip code.
Well, I was just wondering why it's not public knowledge to our residents.
Jack, so just let you know, if a sex offender moves into a neighborhood, the county has to send a notice out to anybody within so many feet or a mile of that location.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just curious, being a resident of the city, whether we know where these people are, and why don't I know where they're at through our city?
Chief Salum, can you answer?
Yeah, all that information is public. They're required to register with the sheriff's office. They're the ones that have to maintain that listing. They're the ones responsible for mailing that information out. It is public. You just go to the sheriff's website, and I believe there might actually be a link also on our police department website page that takes you there. So it is public. It's maintained by the sheriff's office.
Okay, so we feel that we owe no responsibility to the residents to know where these people are, if they're within our city?
Well, Jack, they are. We can't post them on a wall.
We can't?
I don't believe we're allowed to, or maybe we can. I don't know.
Do they have rights that we can't know where they're at, or what's the deal? I'm just curious how this works. Pardon?
In fact, it's just the opposite. The information that you're concerned about is right at your fingertips through the Cogge County Sheriff's Department. They have a registry. It gives you a bunch of information on there. You can search that registry and find out anything that you would want to know.
So if you go to the Seven Hills Police Department website, correct, the city website?
I go to the sheriff's department website, but I believe there's a link on our website as well.
So if you go to the Seven Hills Police, they have a link up there which will take you to through all that.
But we're aware of these people being in our city?
To the extent that they report as they're supposed to and register as they're supposed to, because a court orders somebody to do this, it doesn't mean that they do it. But for the most part, they're fairly compliant. Probation officers and probation departments do a great job in following up on that. It's something that's regularly done and taken very seriously by the authorities.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Anybody else this evening? Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. Holly Strick, 5741 Skyline, Patrick Orwick's neighbor that also borders the volleyball court, which it's been a while since I was here, but I just wanted to say that I do feel the same way that Pat does, that he's expressed at the meetings that I haven't been able to attend. And any consideration that you folks can help us out with, we greatly appreciate. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I have a question. If you can get her back. I asked this, yeah, Holly?
Yeah.
Councilman Elliot. Okay, so I asked this question to Patrick two weeks ago.
Okay.
If we put something else in that spot, are you gonna be okay with it? Let's say we put the, all the equipment for the playground moving in there. Would that be better than
the? If it were the playground equipment, yeah, it would be easier. If it were something else, it would depend, of course, on what it is. It's just a matter of how much noise it generates and the nature of the noise. When you hear young men in their twenties and every other word is F, and they're at the top of their lungs, the windows are all closed, the AC is on, I'm in the family room, the TV, I have the TV on, and I can still hear it, and I'm the furthest in my home, I'm the furthest away that I can possibly get. It's really obnoxious. You know, it's just really, really, really bad. But like I said, it would depend on the nature, like the playground noise, kids are here and gone and that type of thing. It's not, it's not the same kind of noise, you know. I hope that answers it, Councilman. Like I said, it would depend on how close it is also. I mean, even the 20 feet, and I think it's actually 22 feet, because when it first came in, I actually kinda tried to measure it, not that my measurements are accurate, but anyway. It would be nice if it could be a little, like maybe 30 feet away from the fence line as well, if you guys did do anything. Just because it is so close, it's like having people in your backyard constantly, like even when there's the sports activities, the Little League teams and stuff, and right now they're playing like two doors down from me. And it's like being at Chuck E. Cheese at peak hour. Seriously, seriously, it is. Last year, my best friend had brought her dog over, and she was helping me rearrange stuff in my screened-in porch. It's actually in the backyard, right? And I have a deck that goes around it, and so we had the dog tied to the deck. It's just a little guy, it's a shih-tzu. And one of the soccer team coaches had come earlier to help set up, and he was standing over by where the current pavilion is. And so, I don't know, they were maybe there five minutes, and of course Angel was barking for five minutes, not near the fence line, near my house. If it had been longer, we would've brought her in, because I don't wanna piss off on my neighbors. And the coach actually yelled in our direction, "Get that dog to shut the hell up," you know. And this is just, you know, when there's so much activity going around, and there's so much of it and so many people, it's like having a major, major party in your backyard constantly, you know. And so that's part of my issue with the noise as well. So that kind of, I guess, semi answers your question. I don't know. But it would depend on what it is. But even if there was some kind of a noise barrier or something, because originally when we were talking, we were offered arboride on the side of the park, which would be nice, because then people couldn't lean against their fence with the chairs and hang out and all that kind of stuff, because that's what currently happens now when the kids are playing the Little League games. I mean, they're right up on my neighbors' fences, they're literally right leaning up against the fence, and there's like no buffer zone at all, you know.
How long have you lived at that house?
Okay, I grew up in that house. When I was growing up, there was just the baseball and some playground equipment. Then for a while, it went to disrepair. I moved, my parents lived there. I inherited the house four years ago, and I had stayed with my mom. She was older and had some health issues. So I kinda lived with her for almost 10 years before she passed four years ago. And the volleyball court, the old volleyball court, was not a problem. It was far enough away. There wasn't like Little League stuff, a lot of it going on, and it was always really quiet. So when I moved in, I thought, oh, this is like awesome, right? I got my retirement home, right, that I grew up in, got a beautiful screen and porch, beautiful, nice backyard, you know, trees, blah, 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 you know, nice area to look at, kids are playing there. But it wasn't like obnoxious. So it was so much different, you know. I mean, it's changed what the last couple of years.
Well, I believe you hit the nail on the head when you said the parks used to be in disrepair. Under this administration, they're no longer in disrepair. We're fixing them up. Hold on. Let me finish. We're literally fixing them up so people can go back to the parks.
Absolutely.
So Little League kids, little kids in the city have a place to play. I used to coach, and I used to coach at that park.
Okay.
Years ago, and I coached football there. I've coached everything there, and then it fell into disrepair.
Yeah.
And we stopped having games and stuff there. Well, that's not happening anymore because parents and the little children that live in the city wanna play ball.
Absolutely.
That's, I mean, that's part of this. That's why it's hard for us to switch a volleyball court around. The old volleyball court, no one used it because it was horrible.
Yeah, they were occasionally.
Sure, but not anymore. Now it's nice and people are gonna play there.
Absolutely.
The ball field's nice, people are gonna play there. That's, you know, I know Councilman Morrow and Councilwoman Kelly have been doing some research the last couple of weeks, so I'm gonna let them take it away. Now's the time to discuss it, correct?
No.
And I do.
Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec meeting.
Okay, well, I mean, it's miscellaneous. You can discuss what you researched over the last two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Why not?
I have done a lot of research. Basically, from my perspective, I'm trying to just go off of facts and see where we're at citywide as well. You know, there is drastic improvement to the Parks and Rec citywide. So, I mean, what I'm looking at is where houses are in relative to structures, multipurpose fields, and, you know, also looking into the finances of moving a park structure that was already done, you know, less than, or about a year ago, year and a half ago. So that's where I'm at right now with my research. I've put in a ton of hours, you know, and I look forward to sharing that at our next Parks and Rec committee meeting, which is in two weeks.
Yeah, and I just wanna say that I acknowledge that there's all the improvements done, and I think it's great, because you're right, it wasn't disrepair for a long time. It's just there's nothing to mitigate any of the noise at all. And because it is, the park is long and narrow, as everybody here knows, it's such an odd kind of shape to have all that activity. It's just, it's so close. And that's my, but no, I think it's wonderful that everything's being done. People need to enjoy the park, and I'm absolutely not against that. We used to take my daughter there when she was little, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kelly, I'm sorry you mentioned your name. Did you have anything, or no? You wanna save it?
I'm gonna, you know what, I'm still processing and still doing some preliminary stuff, but I'll be prepared to discuss it at the next meeting during our parks. Thank you.
No.
Mr. President, I'd like to go back and answer Jack's question if I can.
Yes, go on.
Jack, if you go to Secretary of State Yost's website, or ohio.gov, you have a sex offender search. It's center ohio.gov, Residents and Resources. If you launch the offender search, it takes you to Attorney General's website, Dave Yost. You can search by a specific address. It'll give you every offender who is registered, a home address there, a work address, a school address, or another address. Additionally, it allows you to sign up and receive email alerts whenever a published offender registers within that selected radius that you choose. So you could set it up, put the circle around your house, you can type in, for example, your street address, city hall, whatever. You can see that the radius, even if you use this address, covers a pretty large portion of the city, and you would know if anybody comes in or out of that radius. So that would probably answer your question. The resource is there. It's pretty usable, it's pretty user-friendly. Literally, you type in your address, the name of the city, the state, the zip code, and what type of search, whether it's a home address, work address, school address, or other, and it gives you everybody, gives you their picture, what you're charged with, et cetera. It'll give you a whole drop-down list on the side of anyone else that's within that radius. So the information's there. You can sign up, somebody moves in, it notifies you. Thank you very much, I sure appreciate that.
Yes, thank you Director Moore. Mr. Orwick?
Yes, Patrick Orwick, 5733 Skyline Drive. I wanna take this opportunity to thank Councilman Elliot for bringing this up at the last meeting and bringing it to conversation and miscellaneous comments. That was, I believe, very helpful. I wanna thank Councilman Morrow and Councilmen's Kelly for all the work that they're doing looking into this. I wanna say those thank yous. Holly came today to express again her support for some of the things that I've brought to the attention of this council over several months now. And I wanna just kinda state that here we are again, talking about her being asked, what should be put there in place of the volleyball court. I think that's a little difficult for her to have an answer to, and I think she communicated, you know, very well her feelings about everything. But the situation is, is that Plan 3 shows, despite what we heard last meeting, that everything, as far as I know, that's planned to go into the park is positioned on the plan. As I pointed out earlier, if someone were to look at the sidewalk that transects my proposed location for the volleyball court, and maybe make that sidewalk sweep in just a little bit of a different arc, it seems like it could possibly go there. Seems like a park designer could probably identify if that was feasible or not. But that opportunity will be closing. There's equipment at the park now, there's demolition occurring at the park now, so delaying looking into this in terms of having an opportunity for it to be moved might be a shrinking window for that particular spot, which might be a really good one. I don't know. So I would thank you very much again for all of the conversations and work so far, and I thank you for listening to the points I made here. So thanks again.
Thank you. Reports and communications from the Mayor/Safety Director?
Thank you. Just like to remind for the minutes that this matter of volleyball courts were discussed in the January Parks meeting. It did not move forward for lack of a motion or any support. It was discussed in the February Parks meeting, where a motion was to have the Parks Committee look into criteria that would lead to having it removed. In addition, there were long presentations made by the administration on September 27th meeting, the October 11th meeting, and the October 25th meeting. So the administration has done their due diligence over and over and addressed many of these things. It's kinda interesting. I welcome back to the meeting Ms. Strick, and if you'd like to stick around, I'd be happy to have a meeting with you in my office after this meeting. But I also make sure it gets into the meetings that one of the things you complained about today was the Little League and a coach in the soccer team. So are we now saying, it opens up a precedent that people should take into consideration when they're doing whatever research, that at a park, you're going to have park-like noises. Shouldn't be swearing, should be some reasonable use, and one of the things that we are installing in the park is surveillance. Another thing that we've had in another meeting, we asked the police to look at reports, and there had not been any reports of any misbehaving. So I ask council, take all these things into consideration for the next meeting, what we presented in the January meeting, the September meeting, and the two October meetings. If there's a resolution for any kind of change, I'd like the points that were made up by the Service Director, the Rec Director, and myself in those meetings to be addressed. But welcome back, and I'd be happy to talk to you after the meeting. I'd like to thank council for their expedient approval of Phase 3. Some of the coolest things are coming to fruition in our parks. Three years of planning is coming ahead now, and on that master plan, it was almost around 90% of the city was for it, doing my informal poll. No public record will support that, but it was disseminated multiple times in social media, newsletters, and the feedback, even from some of the most staunch critics, have been very excited for this program. And I thank council for the unanimous support of this project from conception to the fruition. And I ask the people that do use the parks to have a little patience. It's been a muddy, mild winter, so there's a lot of mud out there. There's a lot of construction going on, particularly at North Park, but you're gonna see a lot of activity at Kelvin in the weeks ahead, too. So be careful around the construction equipment. Please have a little patience, because it's gonna be rewarded at some point later this summer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from Directors of Departments. Director of Finance, Petruniak?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Director of Lawmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our report is on file with the clerk of council and able to be reviewed by council.
Thank you. Director of Public Service, Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report.
Thank you. Engineer Schmitzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report this evening.
Thank you. Bill and Commissioner Grassi?
Thank you, Mr.